Reconvene in open session.
Do I have all my board members?
Okay, we will now consider action on closed session items. Ms. Heliger.
I move the board to approve the Fourth Amendment to the superintendent employment contract as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Heliger and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote all in favor by show of hands. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to review. It's kind of anti-climactic. Will you all stop goofing around? Okay, first up is review of the minutes from the previous meetings. Do we have questions on the minutes? I can assume we have none, we will move along. Next up is review of the proposed TEA exemption waiver for class sizes and grades K-4 for elementary schools. Do we have questions on this item? Hearing none, moving on to our proposed purchases exceeding $50,000. First up is the Texas Success Initiative Assessment Testing. Do we have questions on this item? Okay.
I have one question.
Oh, it's Mr. Rosenthal.
And I don't remember, I think it may have been a question that was an answer to, but not every student is tested, takes that test, correct? Doesn't it depend, I mean if a kid has like really good PSATs, they don't have to go do it? Got it?
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. All right, next up is to review the proposed targeted improvement plan for Ridgemont Elementary School. Do you have a presentation on this, Dr. Dupree?
Yes ma'am, we've asked, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Joe Rodriguez, our Chief of Schools, to introduce the presentation, but he's got a small team with him, including the principal of Ridgemont Elementary, Stephanie Houston, with us this evening at the table. So, and they've been working very hard to develop this plan, and so they're looking forward to discussing with you this evening. Joe?
Madam President, the school board members and Dr. Dupree, every year, the state of Texas puts Texas public schools and Texas public school districts through a rating process. This, last year was no different. Last year, we did see much success from our schools, that success equated to success at the school district. So what we have tonight is, we have a presentation over the targeted improvement plan for Ridgemont Elementary. And I do have to say, before I pass it over, is we did see academic gains from Ridgemont Elementary. We are extremely proud. Mrs. Houston did just an exemplary job last year, and we know that she's going to continue to do that job as well this year. We also want to thank you because with your assistance, we have been able to come up with a great plan. And we have identified some areas of concern, and we feel that the plan that we have ready for presentation is going to address all the concerns and take Ridgemont to the next level. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to pass it on to our amazing Assistant Superintendent, Anthonyndelicato.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Dupree. We are bringing Ridgemont Elementary's targeted improvement plan to you tonight for your feedback and to answer any questions you may have. Also, per the Texas Education Agency, our TIP requires board approval. And as a result, this will be brought forward to you for approval at the October 23rd board meeting. And as Joe mentioned, joining me this evening are Stephanie Houston, our Ridgemont Elementary Principal, and Ms. Lisa Costin, our Director of Accountability and Assessment. So we are excited to share with you our Ridgemont Elementary Targeted Improvement Plan, also known as the TIP, this evening. The Targeted Improvement Plan is a requirement for third-year improvement required campuses. The purpose of a targeted improvement plan is to assist a campus in identifying the root causes of low performance through data analysis and needs assessment, and then putting a targeted plan in place to support improvement in these areas. TEA has a continuous improvement framework in place to support campuses in the creation of their targeted improvement plan. This includes components of effective schools as determined by research, known as the seven critical success factors. The seven CSFs are seen in the gray circle, and they are: improve academic performance, increase the use of quality data to drive instruction, increase leadership effectiveness, increase learning time, increase family and community engagement, improve school climate, and increase teacher quality. The blue circle outlines support systems expected at the campus level, which include capacity and resources, communications, processes and procedures, and organizational structure. The dark red circle is district commitments that are necessary to support the campus, and these include operational flexibility, clear vision and focus, a sense of urgency, high expectations, and district-wide ownership and accountability. The outcomes expected from this continuous improvement framework are seen in the center of this diagram, and they are continuous improvement, accelerated achievement, sustainability, and system transformation. The Campus Leadership Team, or the CLT, consists of a campus principal and administrator, as well as representatives from appropriate content areas, departments, and programs, including the Counseling Department and programs serving students in special populations, which includes special need students, English language learners, Title I and migrant, or students participating in career and tech courses. The CLT is responsible for the development, implementation, and monitoring of the targeted improvement plan, monitoring student performance, and determination of student interventions and support services. In previous years, a campus involved in the TACE process required a PSP, also known as a professional service provider. The PSP worked with the District Coordinator of School Improvement to make up the Campus Intervention Team, or CIT. Since Fort Bend is part of the Relay Instructional Leadership Cohort through TEA, a PSP is not required this year. As part of the Relay Initiative, there are regular supports provided, as well as site visits through Region 4 Relay contact. The CLT and Campus Intervention Team will collaboratively engage in the Texas Accountability Intervention System to develop and monitor a targeted improvement plan, and take responsibility for improving outcomes for low performance. The CIT is responsible for working collaboratively with the campus in the continuous improvement process and the development of the targeted improvement plan. So this graphic outlines the targeted improvement plan continuous improvement process. Beginning with the red arrow, the campus begins with an in-depth analysis, and our Accountability Department has been very helpful in analyzing Ridgemont's data a multitude of ways, followed by a needs assessment as seen in the green arrow, which includes a root cause analysis, which then leads us to a targeted improvement plan identified by the purple arrow, where performance objectives are created with strategies that will help us achieve the performance objective. We then move into the bottom arrow, which is the implementation and monitor phase, where we will review our data to determine the level of implementation, the level of impact, meet progress track requirements by TEA, and adjust the plan as needed to ensure success. As you may remember from our accountability presentation last month, there are four indices of our 2016-17 state accountability system. At Ridgemont, as noted on this slide, we did not meet the target on Index 1 student achievement. The target was a 60, and Ridgemont scored a 51. Index 2 is student progress, and the target of 32 was met and surpassed, as Ridgemont scored a 40. Index 3, closing performance gaps, was not met, as the target was 28, and Ridgemont scored a 26. And then Index 4, post-secondary readiness, the target of 12, was met and exceeded by a score of 17. A campus with performance data for all four indices must meet the target on either Index 1 or 2, and the targets on Index 3 and 4. The Texas Education Agency requires the targeted intervention plan to contain certain components, which are summarized in these blue rectangles. We begin by identifying our problem statements, and then conducting our needs assessment, which helps arise at the root causes. Our district goals were then our starting point when creating our performance objectives and strategies, to be sure we are aligned. Our parent input helped us continue to refine and add to our performance objectives and strategies. Starting with a big-picture perspective, our TIP has a total of four performance objectives and a total of 32 strategies. 32 strategies may sound like a lot to be able to monitor and focus on, but many of the strategies are identical or similar across all four district goals. Our next four slides will outline each of the four district goals and our main focus for the strategies we are addressing. So to address maintaining an equitable learning environment, one of our key areas of focus is PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. This helps improve the learning environment and climate at the school. Our Relay Learning has helped our campus learn specific processes, including data-driven instruction, also known as DDI, which supports intentional planning, student data disaggregation, and intentional reteach methods. This process is in alignment with the direction of our assessment framework, using student work as a guide for next steps of intervention. There is also a coaching component of Relay that supports our teachers through specific feedback to guide their continued growth. There is ongoing professional development for our teachers as well, particularly in the areas of writing and science. Lastly, we are engaging our local service clubs and community outreach through our all-in mentoring initiative to support select students grades 3 through 5. To increase student ownership, we will conduct monthly parent engagement workshops, centering on sharing what our students are learning and activities that our parents can do at home with their child to support the learning at school. Notice the Relay is again listed, as this is powerful learning that is one of our key vehicles of improvement. We appreciate the board's approval last spring of a lead master teacher at Ridgemont for this year. This supports a more consistent use of the flexible grouping model that is an expectation at our Edge campuses. Students will track their progress to help them own their data and build their self-efficacy when charting their gains, as well as knowing areas to continue to focus on. Additional learning opportunities outside the school day will be provided. This was requested by our parents through the two parent input meetings we had on the TIP. To ensure we have an inclusive collaborative learning environment, our Relay Learning has helped our campus learn specific processes to ensure we employ the backwards planning model, where teachers via Schoology will develop interim assessments before the unit of instruction begins. This in turn assists teachers when planning by accessing the curriculum and resources in Schoology to ensure their instruction is rigorous enough leading up to the assessment. Data-driven instruction was mentioned earlier, as well as the ongoing professional development for teachers focused on writing and science. The writing professional development will assist our staff with incorporating writing across the content areas, as we realize writing cannot occur in isolation, it must be emphasized at all grade levels. The Relay Coaching is a significant component supporting a collaborative learning environment that grows our teachers to in turn support our students. Notice again the impact in this district goal of students owning their data. We understand the importance and benefits of partnering with our families and community to ensure we have a safe and secure collaborative community. The Counselor's Corner consists of monthly parent interactive meetings to share critical information with our parents. Having a more robust and frequent parent newsletter from our teachers to our parents was a recurring theme from our two parent input meetings on the TIP, and so we have included that as a strategy in our plan. This will include sharing the due date of upcoming major assignments, as well as curriculum resources for home use to support our parents with assisting their child at home. As mentioned earlier, we are engaging with our local service clubs and community outreach to generate support for our all-in mentoring initiatives. This initiative will focus on select 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders to have another positive adult presence supporting them, as well as academic support through weekly interactions. We do have some system improvements in place as a result of lessons learned from last year. These include the following. There is now a school improvement officer, who is myself, who oversees less schools, a total of five, to provide more ongoing support, coaching, and feedback on an almost daily basis. Again, we appreciate the additional staff the board approved for this year for Ridgemont, including a lead master teacher, an RTI facilitator, and a .5 behavior specialist to better support our systems, as well as a new universal screener that is being implemented district-wide. Our Ridgemont staff, through last spring's staff climate surveys, asked for more behavior management training last spring. As a result, all staff received two days of PBIS training on August 3rd and 4th facilitated by Region 4. This has truly helped our school year begin in a positive, organized manner. And then again, our Relay Learning is having a dramatic impact on our lesson planning, our data PLCs, and our coaching. We held two parent input meetings on our TIP earlier this fall, and from the feedback, we added additional strategies to support our targeted improvement plan. Lastly, we have already seen improvements over the course of this year with our PBIS implementation under Ms. Houston's leadership. Everyone at the campus is invested, working hard, and also feels the urgency. We do feel we are on track to make significant gains this year, and as Steph and I have talked about repeatedly, it's not a question of if we're going to gain, it's how much. And so, that concludes our presentation, and we would love to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr.ndelicato. Ms. Costin and Dr. Rodriguez and Ms. Houston, I want to thank you for being here this evening. I have to say, I gave a presentation at the Fort Bend Chamber on Friday, and I was bragging on you guys, really, because of how much you've gained, you guys were able to gain last year. And the board, absolutely, I think I speak on behalf of the board, and I think they'll speak up here in a minute, but we believe in you, and we're supporting you 100%. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for presenting this plan to us. Do we have questions from the board members or comments? Ms. Heliger.
I just want a quick statement or a question, and I did owe everything that Kristen said. We definitely support you all 100%, we do believe in you. I just want to make sure, as a board member, that you have everything that you need. So as we go through this plan, the more detailed plan, it was similar statements around the goals, around make sure we have the right resources. And I know we added resources last year, you know, and I initially thought of this as crashing the project. You know, you put, you know, this is, we were on a critical path, right? And so we put all the many resources that we can to, not necessarily shorten, that's what you normally do in crashing, you shorten the timeline, but make sure that we meet our goals this year. And I just want to make sure that I hear from you guys that you have everything that you need. And if you don't, we want to hear about it, to make sure that you're, I guess, equipped with everything.
Do you want to answer first?
Yes, I will. I've finally just had the, first of all, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Dupree, and to the board, which is my colleagues here. I've just finally had that opportunity to settle down and just really listen to the plan. And I believe in myself, I believe in my team, I believe in the district's support. And I feel very confident that, as Dr.ndelicato said, it's not about are we going to make gains, it's about how much. And I will honestly say to each and every one of you, Ridgemont is getting everything we need to support our deficits or anything that we identified that we're lacking. It has been a true district collaborative effort to focus on what it is that we need and to come together and plan to make that happen for the students and the staff at Ridgemont.
Thank you, excellent. That's what I wanted to hear, you know, that this is the plan, but I want to make sure that we got the resources and we're ready to go. You know, we're staffed and ready to go, so I'm just excited about that for you and for us as a district, so thank you.
Absolutely, thanks for asking.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger, Mrs. James.
Absolutely, so I'll just reiterate that, we want to support you and support your team. And so, we'll look forward to hearing, I guess, reports on this from time to time so that we can hear how things are going and where you think changes are needed or whatever. I had a couple of questions, just to step back towards the beginning, and just so we could kind of get it out there on the table so it was clear. I was struggling, to be honest with you, in reading the problem statements. So I started at the very first one, and the first sentence didn't make sense to me. So I don't know if someone could help me. It's on page 3 of 27 of what they handed me today, which is, I think they're different. It's on page 2 of 25 that was in our board book. And the sentence didn't make sense, so I might be diving into the details a little bit, but I just wanted to really have a full grasp of what we've identified as our problems or gaps. It says, what I'm reading from says, "Our African-American students across all grade levels have a 59% pass rate on Star Math, and the economically disadvantaged scores have increased over the last three years." So the... I don't know what that means.
I mean, I can. Well, before you answer that, that's one of the reasons why I asked what I asked, because if you look at the problem statement, or the root cause is similar in several of these. And so, that's why it was of concern to me to make sure that you have the resources necessary to mitigate these problems that you have. So that's why I asked that, because of the root causes that were listed here, okay?
And I guess that Ms. Costin will answer, but as we looked at our root causes and created the problem statement, it was looking at, basically with Edge being new last year, that was my first year there. So after looking at the data, we determined what could have been root causes, the reason why the school had not made as much progress as we all expected. So definitely, you do see a thread of lack of systems that's running throughout our plan, which, as you can see, the TIP plan for this year focuses a lot on having those systems created so that we will sustain the change, and it's not just a one-year fix, as you were questioning. So we really did look at our data, and we have seen our economically disadvantage, as well as our African-Americans. They are, we're making gains, but as our economically disadvantaged students make gains, our African-American students are making gains, so therefore, we still have a gap there. And as the slide presentation showed in Index 3, we're making that progress, but they're both progressing at the same rate. So it appears that we're not making those gains, because we are, you know, challenged to close the gap. So we do have a plan in place to where we're starting to want to see more exceeding progress in our African-Americans, as well as continuing our economically disadvantage to grow as well.
Okay, so thank you for saying that. So I heard a couple of things there, and so one is the systems. So that's absolutely right, because we want this to be sustainable. We don't want this to be a one-and-done. And I heard in the presentation, a lot of behavior, positive behavior training. So really putting that into place, which, okay, so that's addressing behavior issues you might be having, which sounded, from reading the information, sounded like there were a lot of classroom removals because of some behavior problems, which is limiting some access to curriculum and to learning. I think I also read that you had a lot of kids that were very, very behind, where their expectation, so even if you could bring them along, say a full-grade level in time, to be successful on these tests is going to require them getting even further, right? So what other, what other big chunks, I guess, have I missed in that?
So you're right in that there was over-representation in terms of discipline when we compared two years ago to last year. And that was, if a student's not in class, there's no chance they're going to learn. And so, between that data, hearing from the staff from the spring culture climate survey, it was very loud and clear, even though these were very effective teachers, based on gaining, you know, hiring into the Edge model, they still wanted and needed more behavior management training. So we went to the expert, Region 4 came and gave a two-day training for all staff, not just teachers, but the entire building. This is actually both the Edge campuses, on August 3rd and 4th. And so, the nice thing is, they got the training, and then with Stephanie's excitement and leadership, they actually applied it immediately to have consistent school-wide practices. Because last year was all these new teachers from different campuses in Fort Bend, outside of Fort Bend, coming together and then kind of figuring out the model as they go. Whereas this year, they all kind of knew, those that returned, which was the majority, they knew what to kind of expect and where the needs were. So I remember hearing them talk about their 3-2-1 acronym. You know, when we walk in the hallways to transition, you're three blocks away from the wall, two hands in front of you, I've got the little kid now too, and then one block between the person in front of you, so you're not bumping into it, and then there's, you know, physical encounters. And so for the first day and a half of school, I was there, and they're literally practicing it over and over and over again. I heard one teacher say, Juan, you've lost your number two, because his hands are all over the place. And so he got his hands back where they go. And then we're after Harvey, we were very intentional and replanned, rebooted the whole thing again, because they were out of school for, you know, a couple of weeks. So the nice thing is, that has continued on, and I wouldn't say things are just perfect, but they're so much better to now, we're not dealing with just school-wide, transition-wide issues in the halls. It's more just individual students that need additional support through the RTI facilitator and our behavior coach as well. So that's been a very good, very good start, very good first step. The other piece that continually shows up in our slides is not just PBIS, but also the Relay component. And so PBIS helps address the behavior, consistent routines and procedures, both in-class and out-of-class. The Relay piece focuses on the instruction, growing teachers, and it's kind of addresses that knowing-doing gap. We know what we need to do, but there's a gap between knowing it and doing it. And Relay gives us such a succinct, systematic, protocol-type way to help connect the gap to where it teaches the how, to where you know what you need to do, and it teaches the how to where you're actually doing it. And the teachers, again, have been very receptive and very open to doing a try for kids and learning and growing. So that's our two key focus areas for this year.
And to get to the point, to clarify the problem statement, what we, we worked through a lot of data, but this particular problem statement is focusing on Index 3, which is closing the performance gaps that Ms. Houston was speaking about. But specifically, the numbers that we're talking about there is that, that idea of, you know, looking at all students progressing and the African-American students progressing as well. Well, this particular number is the idea that this past year, 59% of the African-American students, we got 59% that met or exceeded the approaches grade level standard. But the year before, it was at 51, so we had growth. It's just that, when compared to the economically disadvantaged students, which is the largest group on the campus, they went from, they were at 73, and so we stayed in the 70s with them, but, so by only going up that six, or what was it, eight points, it just, it didn't narrow the gap, it just kept the gap about the same. It narrowed it a tiny bit, so we did go up two points, so we missed by two points still. But we just have to keep going on that path. The other thing that we looked at is specifically at the progress measure, which is measuring what you mentioned about the idea of that year's worth of progress versus... what you mentioned about the idea of that year's worth of progress versus exceeding that and having to do more. And so, we were very intentional also about looking at, when we were doing the performance objectives, making sure that we targeted that as well, to make sure, that's the key way to, it, to actually decrease the performance gap, is make sure the group that is, has the biggest gap is actually increasing at a higher rate. This one's increasing as they should, and this group is increasing at a higher rate. In a nutshell.
Okay, that, that helps a lot, so thank you for that. And I, I guess then, when I, my next follow-up to that would be, it seemed to me that that effort would be very labor-intensive. And I, I guess the Edge program is designed a little bit to handle that, but then it goes back to what Ms. Heller was saying earlier, do, do we have the resources we need to address this in the very best possible way? Because for these kids, this is their, this is their chance. They've got to learn how to read. I mean, we, we, every day, every day is one day too many, you know? So, that's, I guess that's my question, is that, and, and then my, my next question to that was, and then I think you touched on it a little bit, were there changes or did you make changes or adapt, adaptations to the Edge model this year? Particularly focused on that academic piece, on the flexible grouping and on the, so students can progress. Did you make some changes to what you'd done last year? Or are we doing the more, more or less the same thing with maybe some of those positive behavior things built in or other things? Can you?
Yes. Well, with, with the relay model...
I'm not familiar with the relay model, so that, maybe that's the answer. I, I know it's up there, but I don't know what it is.
And, and I'll go into a little bit more details with that model. It's just been very intentional with working not only with a, a management piece, but also a rigor piece. So, therefore, as we are working with, with the teachers, with that coaching piece and giving that real-time feedback, we are also assisting teachers with that in-depth planning, creating action plans so that, once they receive data and it's analyzed, we will still have that flexible grouping piece through the Edge model. This year, it is just much more intentional, not only flexible grouping by readiness, but also looking at flexible grouping intentionally with interest. Also, with the PBIS component being a part of, of managing that, that positive intervention behavior supports, it allows the classroom teachers to easily or more fluently flexibly group across the grade level where students are actually taking ownership of their own learning. At the same time, the teachers are able to positively manage the behaviors as they are teaching the content. And that was definitely a, one of our big pieces that we had to definitely have a plan in place to focus on for this year. So, to answer your question, yes, we, we are keeping all of our Edge model, just being much more intentional and really having succinct data to drive those flexible groups.
Okay, and so, are the student, do the students know where they are as far as where they are versus where they're expected to be?
Absolutely, absolutely. Each student, part of, of our Schoology model, has learning progressions where students know exactly where they are performing on the learning progression. So, it's within our district curriculum, Schoology, as well as it is within our Edge model. Last year, we had data binders, so students are setting goals. And when we think about our latest training this summer with impact teams, that focus it, focused on not only creating the self-efficacy of the teachers, but also that efficacy of students. So, with, with those pieces, through our own district professional development, as well as with, what's in Schoology and through the relay process and with the Edge model, yes, our students will have ownership of where they are actually performing as well as where they are expected to perform. So, yes.
That sounds great. And how about the parents? Do they, do they have that same information or how do they get that information?
Yes, with the, we were very intentional with, in our plan, creating the parent workshops. And we are focusing on where the students are actually working within the curriculum so that our parent meetings are designed to, at that time, work with the parents and give them ways and strategies that they could help their students at that particular time. As well as building in a piece to our parent component that we can actually teach the parents what's coming up so that they feel that connection and supporting their child at home. So, we're, we're actually looking at, how do we provide that parent support and, and having our parents to feel good that they are able to assist their child at home?
That's great. I think that, that's really important. I know Ms. Heller was talking about that earlier. Her child's probably taking algebra or something like that, or new math of some type. But it's the same idea, right?
Yes.
We want to help, but if you don't know how...
Yes.
Or you're not familiar, or you haven't looked at it for a while, or it's a different style, then it's, it's hard to help and be supportive. And then, it becomes frustration and, and not a positive thing. So, thanks for following up on that and encouraging the parents to be engaged, because I think that'll help the kids to be, to be more engaged. And then, I guess my last question is something that kind of just came to mind as you were talking and talking about the diversity of your campus. And I wonder, do you, do you, does your staff feel well-equipped to work with the diverse kids on your campus? Do they feel, you know, knowledgeable? Or have you done any extra training in diversity, cultural diversity, or just helping the teachers to understand where the kids are coming from and what special circumstances they might be facing?
Absolutely, yes. We are, at this time, engaging in a book study by Eric Jensen. It's engaging the mind with poverty, having poverty in mind as you're engaging students within the classroom. So, with that book study, we are using, within our Schoology, which is also part of our FIT teaching training that our staff had with the Edge model last year, we are using the I-do, we-do, you-do model, which is just a, a framework of, of how we're teaching the students. So, sorry if I'm using that instructional language. But, but we're using that particular book study and doing actual engaging lessons with the staff so that the staff can turn that around and have those same lessons within their classroom. So, absolutely, we are engaging in several book studies as well as, you know, video, doing teacher channels so that our teachers can be more equipped with how to work with students that, you know, maybe they never worked with before. And we have most definitely seen great gains.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you for your, all your hard work to get this plan together and your commitment to some of our neediest kids. We really appreciate that. And, Dr., I, I'm all in.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask a brief question. I appreciate all the effort you're making there, and I actually personally visited your campus, very impressed by all the work you're doing there. And we all know that the community involvement, parent involvement, there is no magic to it, you know? And you mentioned on page number eight, "All-in Mentoring Initiative." Could you please elaborate on that? What does that exactly mean?
So, this is an opportunity to engage our community leaders, to rally our community around Ridgemont, as well as our district departments as well, to provide support for select third, fourth, and fifth graders. Basically, it'd be a once-a-week mentoring program where those in the community that were so inclined, and then also here at the district level, they would go and, and work with their, their student, their mentee, for 30 minutes, 30 minutes once a week. And it's kind of a two-pronged component where it would have a, kind of just a positive support and other adult, positive adult presence in their life, but then, you know, building a relationship, but then also an academic support as well, where we would support the students. And, you know, we've been working already with our curriculum instruction department as well as the teachers on campus to make sure we have lessons that are kind of appropriate for the child, whether it's front-loading some learning before they sit in the classroom or following back around with some difficult concepts they might be struggling with. But again, just a way to rally around Ridgemont and make sure that they know, they, meaning the, the students, the community, and the staff, know that we're all behind them, but also to engage in the community so they own that improvement process as well.
Is all fourth graders and fifth graders a part of this, or you select certain students who are in need?
Yeah, correct.
If you do, what is the criteria? How do you select?
Okay, it's, it's select based on need for third, fourth, and fifth graders. And so, we're looking at a number of criteria from the universal screener, which all the districts, all, all the schools in Fort Bend are using, star data as well if we have that, which we do for third, fourth, and fifth, and then also teacher recommendation. So, that way, we can have a very thorough approach and not look at just one data point. We're, we're looking at it from a multitude to make sure that the, the kids that are most in need and most benefit are the ones that are chosen for this.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you being here. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the affiliation agreement between Fort Bend and Texas Women's University Diatetic Internship Houston, related to acceptance of diatetic interns. Do we have questions on this item? Next up is policy CKE Local for Safety Program and Risk Management Security Personnel. Do we have questions on CKE Local? Next up are proposed donations valued at $10,000 or more. We have Sienna Plantation Community Association donated $10,000 to Leonetti Elementary School for the purchase of instructional materials, and the Fort Bend Education Foundation donated $20,000 to cover expenses related to the convocation. Thanks to Sienna Plantation Community Association and the Fort Bend Education Foundation for these donations. Do we have questions on this item? Mrs. James?
Well, worse than that, I just have a comment on the last item, which was the policy.
Okay.
Because the policy at our place is different than the policy in the board book. So, there's just a couple of minor changes in it. It's not that big of a deal, but I'm just mentioning to you that there is just two little sentences that are changed. Is that correct, Ms. Martinez? One is in the philosophy and one is in the very end, which I couldn't exactly find.
That is correct. The changes are in the philosophy. We added the word visitor at the end of the first paragraph.
Yeah, it was emailed to us.
It was emailed to us?
Yeah.
I just didn't, I didn't.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
Sorry to derail you.
No, it's good.
I'm in favor of donations.
Thank you. We're all in favor of donations. Yes, thank you. And then, proposed nomination of individuals for election to the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Do we have questions or comments on this issue?
Well, I could comment.
Please do.
I happened to be at an event today and I ran into Jim Key, and he, I asked him if he was interested in serving again, and he said that, yes, he was. And he actually indicated that there's like, high likelihood that Glenn Whitehead is going to retire in the very short term. And he's the current chair of the Board of Directors, so he felt that it would be good for him to return and help manage that transition. And so, he indicated that he, both he and Al Abramcheck were willing and would like to continue.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have additional comments? Okay. Moving on to leadership development, 1A would be reviewing the proposed ratification of the agreement between Fort Bend and Ace SL LLC to conduct the 2017 convocation at the Smart Financial Center. Do we have questions or comments on this item? Next up is ratification of the agreement between Fort Bend and Safari, Texas, to host the 2017 Welcome Week events. Questions on this item? Next up is a proposed amendment to the agreement between Fort Bend and Jacobs Project Management for Community Engagement Services related to facility planning. And this is for hiring of, it's not DeYoung-Richter, what are they, Strategic Cooperative? Do we have questions on this item?
I just had a clarification. Sorry, I should wait for you to call on me. I recognize that, and I will do better next time.
That's okay.
It mentions in this item, and a steering committee. This is a steering committee like last time, we had a facilities master plan committee or something like that. Is that what this is addressing? Or what is the steering committee? What type of steering committee?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question. The steering committee is one that will be providing additional details to you all in this week's board update to request that each board member submit three recommendations similar to the process that we used for the establishment of the local innovation committee. So, that'll give us 21 members, and then we'll ask Dr. Dupree to recommend nine, so we'll have about a 30-person steering committee. And the steering committee will help to facilitate that engagement as led by Strategic Cooperative to facilitate feedback from the community throughout the facilities process while working with Oscar's group as well and PPK with the assessment facilities information to bring options and recommendations to the board, ultimately updating the facilities master plan and feeding into the capital plan as we formulate the package for the bond of 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Next up is proposed administrators who will serve as TTEST appraisers for 2017-18 school year. Do we have questions on this item? Next is the proposed Fort Bend ISD energy plan. Do we have a presentation on this? Do we have questions on the energy plan? Okay. And then, next up are our guiding principles for the development of the education specifications for elementary, middle, and high schools. And we do have a presentation on this item.
Yes, so it was actually, I'm going to turn this over to Oscar in just for a minute, but I wanted to kind of explain a document. In front of each of the board members this evening is a set of documents that's labeled "Meeting Minutes" from PPK. We have, PPK, the team from PPK has met with individual board members during the last three weeks to really explore their, your viewpoint, to kind of talk about 21st century learning, future-ready learning environments, and to do some deep digging in a, in a instance that would be very hard to do in a larger group. So, what they've done is they've done individual meetings. We've given you, the trustees, the minutes from each of those meetings, and then there's a presentation they put together, including the, that they're about to go through with the guiding principles that have been founded. And these are, again, draft. I want to be real clear, these are draft guiding principles for the board's consideration. But they're going to talk through all of it, but I wanted to set that up with the understanding there has been advanced work with the board on an end-to-end, one-on-one basis that's now coming together tonight as, as, so the board can now process collectively the work to go forward. So, I'll turn it over to Oscar and Carolina from here.
Can you put your mic on, please, sir? Or maybe pull it closer? Thank you.
What we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and start with a presentation, and we have a team from PPK, we have Todd Spore, we have Irene Nigaglioni, and Chris Everett. And what I'd like to do is go through the presentation. Feel free to stop us at any time because this information that we're presenting to you tonight is based on those meetings, individual meetings that occurred, what Carolina and PPK's team heard and how they are bringing that back to you. But at, at this point is when we really need to know. If we, we didn't understand something, you know, as we thought we heard it, then we need to know... to know so we can make those adjustments because this, these definitely are your guiding principles that will lead us as we go to the larger groups and have them understand that this is, you know, what we're wanting to be able to utilize to develop these ed specs. So at this point, I'll turn it over.
Good evening, Madam President. Members of the board and Dr. Dupree, thank you tonight to allow us to come in and share with you the summaries of those three visioning sessions that we held with, with most of you over the last couple of weeks. Just, I know it's kind of a late night, so we'll kind of get right into this if you don't mind. Just real quickly, before I let the subject matter experts that PBK's brought on board for this part of the, of the ed specification, educational specifications, I'll be leading the whole entire long-range master plan as we move forward through this process. But tonight, we're going to kind of highlight the educational specs when it comes to your vision and how we need to go forward with that. As you can see here, it was a three days of really good, or two days of three meetings. It was really good dialogue going back and forth with each and every one of you. We reviewed some of the original goals of the educational specifications and what that means to the team. We also kind of started with your initial 2015 ed specs that you had developed for your elementary school. And as we looked at that and dissected some of that, as from your vision, that's what we built upon as we moved through the, those few days of meetings. We also brought into the table your Fort Bend profile of a graduate, very important work that you all have already done in this process, and it allowed us to really set the stage moving forward as we, as we also looked at your core beliefs and your district goals. Sorry. I'm going to turn it over real quick to Chris and let him kind of talk a little bit about some of the highest hopes for the learners at Fort Bend.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Chris Everdum with Engage to Learn. We're a design and change management partner, and we get to focus heavily on the orientation of this whole project, which is on students, right? What you want for students, how you want to see that play out in your district. Ultimately, it will be connected to the buildings that are designed through the ed spec process. But we focused in our conversations on the first question, which was essentially, what are your highest hopes for kids? And we knew, I knew, after reading your portrait of a graduate, that we were going to hear a lot of those same themes, but it was important for me as a facilitator to hear you articulate some of those things again. So we're just going to quickly kind of review some of that information. I mentioned to you that students spend anywhere from 16,000 to 20,000 hours in school, right? So fair investment of time, and we wanted to identify what, what we really hope that they get from that time. What are we, what are our highest hopes for them? And you said a lot of wonderful things, and they all really came back to the profile of a graduate. You did excellent work in developing that list of attributes, and then you said some additional things, being critical thinker, academically excellent, having healthy habits. There was a general theme of the broader picture there, right? Not just academic success, but whole-child type language was brought in, and it did definitely affirm your portrait of a graduate's attributes. Then we switched gears and we said, ultimately, we know one thing is for sure. We can't really predict the future that these students are going to be entering into when they leave Fort Bend ISD. And so, what are the skills absolutely critical for them to be successful regardless of what that future looks like? And these were some key themes that you all came out of. Collaboration, being self-motivated, having a tech savvyness, knowing and adaptability to technology, being creative, the sense of lifelong learning, learning from failure, being able to take risks and understand how to learn from those risks, being disciplined, that came over every, not, not being disciplined like their behavior being disciplined, but being accountable and learning to structure their ability to function autonomously, being open-minded, and being in upload mode, which I thought was a really interesting concept, and not just downloading information from teachers in the process, but being able to really create and contribute. Okay? So then, we said, okay, well, if those are the skills, what skills do teachers need to have in order to create the experience necessary to get those student attributes? Teachers need to be lifelong learners. You did have knowledge of technology, not be an expert necessarily, but be open to learning, have a student-centered focus that came over again and again, and the ability to accept and adapt to change because we do know at times are changing. Learning environments are changing. Students and their context has changed. And then, ultimately, I just want to, we're about to turn this over to Irene, but describe that those, that orientation of focusing on students will help us in the next phase of this because we'll use that as a jumping off point when we really start to try to translate what you want for kids as a result of their time here into principles that can guide the ed spec work that we're going to continue to do.
Good evening. My name is Irene Nigaglioni, and I'm president of IN2, and I'm a, my background is mainly as an educational facility planner, so I'll be taking the information and trying to tie instruction and construction together so that we can result in your educational specifications. So we asked you what types of environments were most conducive to learning, and we shared some examples with you. And we started talking with an image on the left, which is our traditional classroom, what we today here call the cemetery effect classroom, where students are all exactly the same. You have a plot of land, but students that are facing the same way, and there's no distinction between them, as you can see in the picture on the left. And moving to an environment like the one on the right where it's collaborative, where there's no rigid setting of, all the research points to choice and settings as being the top quality of an environment, so allowing for that, creating spaces for, that are diverse so that they're not the same for everybody, collaborative and community shared spaces. We, you were all very stressed the importance of the community and bringing them to the schools. We talked about motivating spaces, spaces that promoted awe and promoted excitement in students as they came to the building. And there was a lot of discussion about safe environment and as well as an active and agile environment that have promoted that whole-child mentality. So these are some of the things that came from that, and we know that are linked to research as well. And then, lastly, we said, what are the attributes of the built environment that must be maximized in our schools, you know? And we looked at that because in some cases, we tend to think of just a few, but we wanted to capture all of those, and we asked the questions. You all brought natural light to the discussion, naturalness, the connection to nature, which is, again, linked to improvements in student achievement. Agile furniture, not only flexible, but agile, so you can change it easily every day. Improve the air quality. We talked about the importance of ventilation and temperature in the built environment, choice, and then the connection to the outdoor environments, and extend, the extension of the classroom and extension of the learning spaces by going into the outdoors, as well as robust technology. So what we did is we took some of the words and some of the messages and some of the discussion that we had, and we crafted them into proposed guiding principle statements, which is, Dr. Dupree said, these are draft, and, and these are to be, meant to be used for elementary, middle, and high school because we wanted the guiding principles to be this very broad philosophy that guides over everything. And then, as we continue in the process of the educational specifications, we're going to continue to drill down, and we might be adding more key design features, but we want these to be broad to begin with. So the first one talks about, we talked about motivation, so our school buildings will motivate and inspire students. We reworded some of the things that you had in your 2015 educational specifications goals because it continued in the conversation to, to have the ability for these environments to be playful and creative for your students. The second one, student-centered learning, is at the heart of our schools. We heard that loud and clear from you. It is on your profile. It is on your goals. So we wanted to make sure we capture that and that it addresses the fact that environments to be diverse and not rigid and similar for everybody. The next one is collaboration and teamwork are essential skills for our students and staff. We talked about those skills that are for our, we don't want to keep saying 21st century students because that's, we're 17 years in the 21st century, so we call them future-focused students and future-focused learners. The ability to collaborate, the ability to create spaces that create casual collisions, much like we heard about the Amazon offices in Seattle and the places where, where people come together and through that, coming together, this conversation that can happen. The next one talks about we can enhance student-staff well-being with the design of our school buildings, this whole-child concept of well-being that has to do with everything from mobility, active learning environments, blurring the lines between the indoor and the outdoor settings, and then creating opportunities in cafeterias for students to gain access to healthy foods and also learn about nutrition. So it's a whole well-being focus. We talked about the learner experiences enhanced by engaging interactive, robust technology, and I'm going to quote something that was said tonight. Again, the whole thought of technology is a tool, not an event, and, but the fact that we need these buildings to, to allow for technology to be embedded and that it's something that is natural and is something that is robust and supports learning. Safety of our students is paramount. We know in order to learn, students must feel safe. Your brain's first, you know, role is either, you know, flight or fight, you know, defending yourself, so making sure that these environments feel, help everybody feel safe from every perspective. Our schools are the heart of our community. Again, very obviously, we want the community. We have such a rich fabric in the community in bringing people here, some of the partnerships that we heard about today, some of the partnerships that were mentioned just a minute ago, and some of your plans, and making sure that, that, that connection is fully supported in schools. Our buildings are learning tools. There is overwhelming research to the, the attributes of the built environment that can help support learner success. So taking advantage of the buildings that you're building, these are significant investments of money, making sure that they're designed in a way to maximize that. And then, lastly, we wanted to capture a statement that talks about change, and change is inevitable and welcome. We commit to continually supporting our teachers to embrace changes in teaching and learning. And again, those have been the themes that we've heard through tonight and talked about the relay programs and some of the things that you're doing to continue to support your teachers. We commission, a very common term is it commissioning, which is of systems, air conditioning systems, electrical systems in buildings, and buildings are commissioned to make sure they're working at their highest level. We want to educationally commission buildings so that you can take advantage of everything that the building has to offer and making sure that you're using it at its highest level and with the most potential that you have. So we wanted to capture from all the discussions that you brought to us, the importance of change, the importance of teacher training and teacher support. So Todd will, or Chris will cover next up.
Just going to cover what comes next with how we begin to translate all of this talk about highest hopes and key skills and the kinds of things that we want to see for kids, how we translate that into something that can be used to create educational specifications. So we're going to convene a fairly large group of stakeholders, students, parents, community members, teachers, principals, central administrators, as many representatives of the community, meaning the whole community of Fort Bend, including the school personnel, to do the work of saying, okay, well, if, if these are the highest hopes, if these are the skills that we have to have, those don't just happen magically, right? They just, they just don't appear. We, we have to design for those skills. So how do we design to get those skills? Now, I heard some tremendous information about curriculum framework and things tonight that we were already having conversations of how we, how we tie those things together, right? So that it fully complements and it makes total sense. And what comes from that is a, a defined experience for the learner, right? The thing that the learner should get to experience regardless of what school or really age level he or she may be in, to develop those skills so that those highest hopes are reached, okay? That's in day one. In day two, we take those behaviors, that experience, and this is where it all links up. This is what gets me really excited about these kinds of projects because if we say that these are the behaviors that we want kids to engage in, if we, if this is the environment we want teachers to create and facilitate in, then the microenvironment, the built environment should support it. And so, from that defined set of behaviors, we can say, as a team, here are the key design principles that the microenvironment should possess to support these behaviors. And it's from those design principles that then architects can create these educational specifications or options for the educational specifications that can meet those design principles, that will support those student behaviors and facilitator behaviors, that will help you to develop those skills and reach those highest hopes, okay? So that's day one and two. That's the kind of the middle, the middle phase, and a lot of deep work, hard work will happen in those two days to set the rest of the process up to be as intentionally maximized success as we can.
Thank you, Chris. So then, after that, that's when we'll be able to take these kind of guiding principles, the design framework, the rubric, if you will, that will come out of that, and really start trying to take that to the departments, taking that down into the classroom level. And so, there'll be a series of multiple meetings after that, kind of with all of your department heads, from CTE to fine arts, special ed, athletics, child nutrition, you name it. Every department that we have identified in Fort Bend ISD will be meeting with individually and as groups to then go into that, that built environment. Talk about the size of the spaces, the kind of adjacencies that need to happen at these facilities, activities, materials and finishes, the kind of equipment, the kind of technology that needs to be in each one of these rooms, and then wrap that up into the educational specifications. That will be fine-tuning your already elementary school that was done back in 2015, but then also carrying that into the middle school and to the high school specifications. And so, with that, we'll kind of turn it back over to you folks to see if you have any questions for us.
Thank you all to the team for spending time with us and getting all of our input and then putting these together for us. We appreciate all six of you. I know all six of you were in the room when I was there, and I know when the other teams were there, so thank you, guys, for your time. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, Todd and Chris and Irene just like to say thank you. I feel like it was a very comprehensive effort that you've made to date with the meetings. I'm sorry I couldn't attend the one day I was scheduled to, but I feel like this is a very thorough process moving forward. And I think I heard you say that we're going to look at, we, we had ed specs for elementary schools that we used in this, in the current bond, but I, I think I heard you say we're looking at those again, and we're going to refine them, and then we will complete ed specs for the middle schools and high schools.
That is absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
And so, now that you have these guiding principles, you're ready to begin the work, and how long do you think it will take to complete the ed specs?
I think right now on the schedule, we are working with the staff to get all of these meetings, those first two big meetings that we want to hold. That's a lot of folk to try to organize, and, and we're trying to get that done as soon as possible, but not letting that hold up. To show there are some of the department heads' meetings that we can go ahead and get started on beforehand and then come back and work some of the visioning back into that. So we're working with the staff as we speak to get those scheduled. Our, our goal is to be done towards the end of this year. It kind of depends on, on how we get some of that started, but we want to get that done as fast as possible so that we can move on with the long-range plan.
So we'll, we'll have them ready to go for next year, then?
Absolutely. Yes.
And then, Mr. Perez, can I ask, are we going to still keep the LEED, LEED certified schools that will be in the design guidelines? Is that right?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. James?
Thank you for that nice presentation and getting all those, getting all of that together, and thank you to the whole team who worked on that. One thing, I'm not sure if it was in there or not. I just made a note about remote learning. I don't know, I know you talked about maybe there was some flexible, there was flexible spaces and flexible learning environments and learning environments that blend one to another, but I don't know if we got remote learning in there, and I'm not even sure where that is in terms of priority for us, but that's just a thought that came to mind. Is it in there?
There's, there's a note about transcending time and place in the learning, but we can make it more clear in adding the note about remote learning.
Where is it?
There it is. The top bullet at the bottom, technology also extends the learning environment beyond the building walls, transcending time and place.
Okay. I guess when I read that, I thought, okay, well, we're using technology as a tool to Google something or whatever, but not so much, you know, teacher at one school teaching a class that's at that school. a class that's at that school and maybe another school across a district, something like that.
The, the team teaching concept that was discussed is what we were thinking, so we can, we can make that a little bit more clear, make sure that captures it.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I guess it's kind of come up a little bit, or I've talked to Dr. Dupree about this a little bit, is how do we want to memorialize this or house this? Is it going to, do we want it to be, Mr. Rice, like you were talking, kind of as we've done it before, with one whole big ed specs document that maybe has these guiding principles as sort of an introduction like we did before, or do we want to separate that in some way? And I don't know if that's, if we want to go down the route of kind of putting a portion of this in policy, and maybe some specifics about how often we'd review these or update them, or update the ed specs and some, some things like that, or if we just want to continue as we've done it in the past. So I don't know, Mrs. Tosan, if you have thoughts on that?
I do have some thoughts on that, but I'm going to let Mr. Rice chime in first.
Okay. Well, I, I would say that it should be presented however Mr. Perez and his team think it fits best, is most suitable, for conveying this information to architects that may be working on the next bond, whatever format that takes, whether you publish a book or it's online or whatever, however, I think that's really up to Mr. Perez. And then I would agree with you that any time that we undertake a new bond or some kind of, if it's been a long time, that we should probably at least revisit these to make sure they stay current, because I'll, I'll let Irene, Todd, Chris speak to the fact that these, I think it has a shelf life, you just don't do it one time, and it's good for the next 20 years, it's going to change over time, so that's what I would comment.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. So my thoughts were, when we, when we did the elementary ed specs, they were included in, in, was it the, one of the manuals that we put together, one of the program manuals, and I think that is how we did it. So my thought was, I, I like the idea of the guiding principle statements, it's more like a, a board philosophy, and that we've put in our policy in other areas, so I think my personal preference would be, like Mr. Rice said, to have the details or the specifics done in a manual that can be looked at, updated, but that are perhaps the guiding principles from the board's perspective could go into policy, and it could be something that we review as we normally do, our guiding principles and our policy, especially if we're, I mean, these are based on our profile of a graduate and our other governing documents, so as we review those and perhaps update those, then this could go through that same review process. So I sort of see it as a, as a, a little bit of both, that we, we put these guiding principles in policy, but then this actual specifications that the architects need and that you guys need to, to give to the vendors would be a separate document. So that, that was my thought.
Yeah, kind of like the way, well, if I can just jump in, I'm sorry, I didn't wait for you to call on me, again, even though I said I would. I just get so excited when we talk about policy. No, but kind of like...
It's okay, Mrs. James.
I have just quirks, okay? So when, just like, looking over here at curriculum instruction folks, just like we did policy EG Local to sort of give some guidelines around curriculum, this is what we expect, this is sort of our guiding principles around this, it came out of our profile of a graduate and our, our core beliefs and commitments, and then they put together the curriculum plan, and that's a plan we review in our oversight role, but we're not involved in developing the details of it. So maybe this could, we could do this sort of in para, in a similar way, that we have a philosophy around it, we have some guiding principles, that then design, Oscar and design and construction folks can go forward and say, all right, well, this is what, this is how we interpret this, this is what our board has in mind, and then we, they can run down the road of the specifics and the specific plans, which would be the ed specs. And yes, Mr. Rice, I agree with you wholeheartedly that when we're doing these types of facilities assessments or big capital improvement plans, we absolutely need to review the guiding principles, and then from that needs to come a review of the ed specs so that we're keeping things up to date, and there should be a cycle defined for the ed specs and the design guidelines as well, and that can be in, a sentence in the policy. I think that's a great idea.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have additional questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
What's your timeline? Yes. What's your timeline for this policy, Mrs. Tosan?
Well, we would like to get it on the next, for next month's meeting.
November.
Yeah, in November.
Good. You're not asking for it for next week, that's all?
No.
Okay.
We'll give the policy committee some time to, to work on.
Thank you. The policy...
All right. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate you staying so late, presenting so well for us. And last but not least are the proposed Dulles Campus minor plat and Willeridge High School replat. Do we have questions on the plating? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience who has anything to say about any of the stuff we just talked about? Are you sure? Okay, Ms. Halliger, you're up.
I move that we adjourn.
We are adjourned.